Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls, City Council Meeting for Tuesday, December the 5th to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Abidi.
Present.
Althoff.
Here.
Carpenter.
Here.
Dalton.
Here.
Mattson.
Here.
McCusker.
Yeah.
And Mayor Robinson.
Here. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to winter and the first city council meeting of winter, I guess you can call it. This time, the Chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Ken, second by Morris. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It's approved. That moves us on to item five this evening, which is public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is anybody wishing to speak on anything not on the agenda this evening?
Chris Albrecht. I live at 6670 Bluff Drive. I did have a quick question regarding the SEMCRA, which is on the agenda. We have an alternative proposal. Is now the time to put that forward or during the discussion on the SEMCRA and the Sandstone Ridge addition? Is it then that I would bring up what I've got for you folks?
Oh, do it during the SEMCRA.
Thank you.
That is a public hearing.
Yep. Anybody else wishing to address the council on anything not on the agenda? If not, that moves us on to item six this evening, which is Resolution 2311, authorizing SEMCRA to move forward the redevelopment plan for Sandstone Ridge Development, and we will be having a public hearing on this.
Okay, thank you. This goes back quite a ways, obviously. It goes back to 2002, 2004 development, primarily a failed housing development back at that time, about plus or minus thirty-five to forty acres off of Highway 25. The, most of the property is owned by the state of Minnesota. Goodhue County is the custodian of it by statute. Earlier this year, Southeast Minnesota Multi-County HRA, or Housing Redevelopment Authority, submitted a development plan for council consideration. There was a ad hoc committee of Mayor Robinson, councilmembers Abidi and Dalton that looked at the initial proposal, recommended approval. Council ultimately approved the resolution for the HRA to move forward with the project. However, then Mr. Wheeler, who's the, Joe Wheeler is the executive director of the HRA, contacted me and said that his legal folks told him that they would need a public, we needed to do a public hearing for this particular process for their financing, and I guess he can explain that if need be. But, so that's, council did set a public hearing for that for October 3rd, but after council set that public hearing, there was, we found, we found that there was quite a bit of, at least a little bit of interest in the residential lots, primarily on the west end of the Sandstone Ridge Development. And therefore thereafter, council set another hearing date, and the HRA has since submitted a revised development plan that's in your packet. Joe Wheeler is here, the executive director of the Southeast Minnesota Multi-County HRA, and he will be presenting the information tonight, but it is a public hearing, so I don't know how you want to handle it.
What we will do is open the public hearing, let Mr. Wheeler give his presentation, and then invite anyone else wishing to address this under the public hearing to come forward. So at this time, we will open the public hearing regarding Resolution 2311, which is the SEMCRA Sandstone Ridge Development Plan, and then after Mr. Wheeler's done, then we will allow anybody else that wishes to speak in the public hearing to come forward to speak. Mr. Wheeler?
Good evening. Thanks for allowing me to speak here this evening. As Ron had indicated, part of the statute for Housing Redevelopment Authority to develop a redevelopment plan, a public hearing is required, so that's the main purpose of coming back and, or contacting the city to hold a public hearing. So that's necessary in order for the council to formally approve, approve the redevelopment plan. There still is no, even assuming that that may happen, what will happen then is the plan will be submitted. The county actually doesn't approve the plan, it's the city that approves the plan, but the county then would have to make a determination if we meet the state statute to acquire tax forfeited property, and that's action that would be required by the county board. Just to kind of tell you about process, assuming that that happens, our first step would be to get the property surveyed, get the title cleaned up, work with the city on any property that they currently own. We've got, we're not even certain if the streets have been dedicated over to the city, so those types of things would have to be worked out prior to moving anything forward. At the same time, what we would be doing is soliciting proposals from for-profit and nonprofit developers to come in, and our main focus is, and that's the big change within the plan, I won't go into a lot of detail. You've got history here. So a report that was done a couple of years ago by Stan Tech Engineering Firm kind of outlined some of the issues with the property, and then put a estimate together, and they broke it into two parts, the east and the west end. Those are things that we obviously need to pay attention to because the soil correction is huge, as well as we're still uncertain as to what actually would occur, would have to occur if the existing streets were being used, and what that cost would be, and so on. So as part of our process, we've set aside money to investigate at least the sewer and water mains within the east end and to kind of take a look at that, and then make a determination of how much of that can be used, what can't be used. But we're really focusing, the plan now really focuses only on the east end. We're looking at developing thirty-six townhomes and/or rental units on that side. The target group for that would be workforce housing, what we refer to primarily families at eighty percent of the county median and below, and/or elderly, and elderly could be fifty-five years of age or older, or could be a little based on the funding that comes in to develop that. I can tell you that basically what's going on in Washington right now kind of changes game plans moving forward, because it will, based on the final outcome of that, it will affect which are big resources, tax credits, and if they lower the corporate tax, all those things, you might see the dollars that are available through the tax credits shrink substantially because there wouldn't be a huge need for corporation to invest in tax credits if they don't have any taxes to pay or as much taxes. But that's just one of many resources that we look at.
I mean, how would, how would that affect your project, Joe?
Pardon?
How would that affect your project?
Well, but most of the projects, when you're looking at workforce housing in particular, I'm going to say about eighty percent of the funding comes from tax credits. So if that goes in, and it was gold before the current administration got in and was paying like a dollar ten, they were getting a dollar ten for every dollar that a developer, or that a investor would invest in the property. That has since dropped since the administration came in to eighty-five cents on the dollar, and with the corporate tax, God only knows where it could go, but it could go, it could drop down to fifty or forty-five or thirty-five cents on the dollar. So it makes a difference. So you've got to look at other resources. Too early to tell where all that's going to go. We have no idea what the state will do. We're living in a great state, so the state of Minnesota understands the huge need for affordable housing in the state of Minnesota, and they've been appropriating some money towards it and providing some incentives for investment. In fact, there's a proposal being worked on right now for a state tax credit program that's basically matched dollar for dollar. So I can only tell you it will be creative. Once we identify a developer that wants to work with us through the process, we'll start looking at all these different avenues, and I'll be talking to the city during that, during that process to try to get it to a point of construction.
I mean, with the deficit, I mean, with the state's projected deficit now, I mean, I don't know if you saw that today, of one hundred and eighty-eight million that they've got to do. I'm hoping that, you know, that they've got a way that they can do some credits, I mean, for you, but I mean, that could play.
Right. We'll have to wait and see. That's one source. Minnesota Housing Finance Agency has dollars available. There's Greater Minnesota Housing Fund. There's some other resources that we can start looking at as well to look at how we might structure a deal as it moves forward. It won't happen overnight, but most certainly we'll look at all the avenues to pull it together. The only other thing I want to identify is the west end is also there for information only. We have no desire to go on the west end, where a lot of the single-family lots are, or a lot of the single-family lots at this point. Our focus tonight is just strictly on the east end, and that map that's provided in the plan doesn't necessarily say that's where the fine line will be, because we'll work with the city and the county to distinguish, you know, what are we actually looking at, and then, you know, getting a survey here and there to get the boundaries and all those things squared away.
How about, how about the lots that have been sold up there? How is that going to affect you?
Those are all on the west end.
Okay.
West end of the property.
How about the solar garden option? Is that part of?
That's still something that we'll most certainly look at as well, and it won't just necessarily be the one. We've actually been working with two or three different ones, and Ron said they've been, they've been working with another one, so we'll kind of open that up to see what our best bang for the buck would be for, for solar option.
Any other questions for, for Joe?
Well, I got a lot of questions, but I don't know, it isn't necessarily for you, but I guess I have some questions about how the city goes about this. But I guess the more we seem to get involved, the more concerns I have because we, when I was on the council last time, the, the project up there got shot down because of the green gumbo clay, and at that time, there was a big thing about that. We didn't accept the property, so we didn't own any of it, but we had put in the water tower and everything else to hook up to this. Then I listened to one word that you said there tonight that concerned me where if the city legally owns the streets, or where that's at right now, because I assume it went through a foreclosure, the way it sounds to me. Now it's a matter of getting that all straight around. And I do know that we have other contractors that bought property there now, and then came along, and supposedly it's questionable if we own the streets and the state owns the property, and the county can sell it, and I don't know if we're getting any assessment paybacks to, for what we invested to hook up to this. So to me, the council should have a workshop on this thing, because I think there's a lot of unanswered questions, and the people that did get the permits here had to come back through the city, and yet the county made the rules and sold the property, and then we had to change something because it, you had to have ten acres, and it was only supposed to be one lot. So the more I listen to this, the more confused I get, and I want to encourage you to, that we're here to work with you. But it also seems to me right now that nobody hands the answer if we will actually get any assessments out of this, or if we're just going to just go with it the way it is. So I do, I do have a lot of questions, and I would hope that the city would consider having a workshop with the council on this sometime. Thank you.
Ron, is the, we had talked about possibly looking at assessments on some of those, or trying to recoup some of those?
Yeah, the, we have the ability, and Linnell, you worked with Roger on this closer than I did, but we have the ability on tax forfeited parcels to collect the special assessment. We'd have to go through the 429, the special assessment process to do that, but there is that, that possibility.
Is there, is that part of the wackensack thing, or is there another assessment besides that?
It'd be whatever the, the special assessment was for, for water and sewer. I don't know specifically what they were, Leroy.
And then, so the ones we're hooking up now, we had two, three of them that we went ahead with. Are we assessing them lots then, or?
There were two that were from the Cedar Hills Division, subdivision. That's not part of the Sandstone, but future ones, council will have to consider whether or not to collect the special assessments that were in the tax forfeiture.
So from your standpoint, I don't know what them assessments would be, but to me, it's something the city should discuss. So just so you know, it sounds to me like there will be an assessment on these lots too. So if that's something that needs to be a part of your figures, probably should discuss that more with Ron.
So Joe, all you're looking for tonight is this resolution, which allows you to move forward.
That's correct.
Into the next stage. So I think those are all questions that we would probably answer once you've got, once you know if you want to try this project, even if it's even feasible to do it, then I think we would get down into the nuts and bolts and, and that kind of stuff of assessments and streets and roads and things like that.
I think once we start getting into the title, those kinds of things, we can start making the determination if the city indeed does own it, doesn't own it, those types of things. Again, that's not a freebie, that's something that we'll step in and start working on. That'll, that's kind of the start base. So we'll find out what that is, and then, and then start having dialogue from there.
And Joe? Contractors that are interested in this, does this affect their thinking at all if, if we do these thirty-six lots with these people? Are they thinking of the same lots? I mean, somebody said they wanted to speak to this, so.
We'll have them after we finish with Joe. We'll talk to him.
Joe, I got one question now. I know you were talking about 2020 possibly starting construction, right?
Mm-hmm.
So it probably could be a little longer because things.
Twenty, twenty twenty would be, you know, again, based upon what's going on, at minimum twenty twenty.
Okay.
And I, you know, the big, the big issue, and this is what I would forewarn individuals that are looking at acquiring property out there, is the report that we, that we presented to the city that was done by the engineering firm, and that soils. I mean, you're talking huge expense just to correct soils, and then I, you know, Ron and I had a little bit of dialogue, what about the streets and sewer and water and so on? Does that all have to be redone? So the soil correction have to be redone on the streets, as well as new infrastructure put in? So again, that's, that's more added cost. So based on that study, we were, it was less expensive to buy an existing lot in town than it was to pursue buying, buying one of those lots. So the thought is, why don't we start on the east end, when we had all this dialogue, get something happening out there, kind of focus on a multifamily development, where we're not looking at huge infrastructure, we can come right in off twenty-five, but even on this parcel that we were looking at, that was a two-year ago estimate, that's, it's about a hundred thousand just due to soil correction on that site. So without any infrastructure yet. So I'm just kind of forewarning then.
You talked about the expense of the green gumbo clay. The only thing I would suggest to you people is that when you talk about this and study this, the one thing that I didn't like is when we had the last study done, and the person just said no, they didn't have any alternatives, any suggestions or anything like that. It's just, you've got to dig it all out of there, and some places is supposedly thirty-five feet. So, but to me, being in the construction industry all my life, you can't tell me that you can't go to a wider footing or a bigger footing. You can go to better waterproofing because of the environment around the house. So I'm more concerned about the street expense to get that updated, because we can do things. And like I told the person at that meeting, it's, it's a little bit ironic to me that we build on fault lines, and we build in sinkholes, and we build in earthquake zones, and then here, we're worried about the corner of the house might sink two inches. So to me, there's a realistic side to this someplace, and it isn't necessarily that we have to dig all that clay out of there. And I would hope that the University of Minnesota or somebody come back and help us with those questions, and you too.
And I, and I agree with you. I mean, you, you might be able to talk to other developers that have done different things based on soils. We had another developer that had interest, this was more a single family, but actually going to a paired system, you know, where you're actually building the house on piers versus in the ground. But again, I'm not an engineer, so I have to rely on their expertise as we move it forward. So I'm basing, this proposal is based on the information that was done for us a couple of years ago, but I agree with you a hundred percent that as this moves forward, we've got to look at, you know, what is the most cost-effective way to get, to get it done.
Thanks, Joe. Anybody else wishing to address the council under the public hearing?
Chris Albrecht. We're actually the one resident in Sandstone Ridge, so we've actually been up there about ten years now. Diana is handing out some packets we put together for everybody. I don't know if necessarily what we're proposing is an alternative, given Mr. Wheeler's statements. We might actually, there may even be some overlap here. We've been up there for, as I say, ten years. We've had a lot of intimate experience with the properties up there, and we are proposing, and if you go to the, one of the, the last appendices in there, where the area highlighted in yellow, which is the flat off of twenty-five, we are proposing a senior housing development there of twenty-eight single-level condominiums, one side-by-side twin home, five back-to-back fourplexes, and one back-to-back sixplex. We're attempting to hold the price on these units to, under two-twenty-five. What, what really drove a lot of this for me was my parents have relocated back here to Minnesota, and the challenge of finding senior living for them, senior housing, was really, there was just nothing available. We really had to do to try to find anything. And I've talked to most of the realtors in town, and over and over again, what I hear is there is a huge need for senior housing, and relatively affordable senior housing. We're not looking at building luxury homes up there, we're looking at building affordable, very similar to what's over by the pool off of, over by the pool there. So basically, what we're coming up with is we would build these units, we would try to, I, again, I don't know about any grant money or what have you, but we've costed it out ourselves, and we believe that we can acquire the properties from, from Goodhue, which I believe some of that money does come back to the city. We've built in that there would be some assessments coming back to cities that we would pay. However, we'd want to work with the city on that. The street cost is still a question as to what exactly that is, because we don't have engineering back on that yet. We're looking at the soils, and we have built in soil remediation. Basically, by building these larger units, our soil remediation costs are actually relatively low, and by building the larger units and the larger slabs, we're able to address a lot of these blue clay issues that we've been speaking about. Down Rochester, they're building a lot of units like this every day in that area, and they're having quite a bit of success with it. We would.
With blue clay in Rochester?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Absolutely. No, and there's.
Are they going to slab houses or basement houses?
And we're looking, these would all be slab, yes. And slab is really, in this kind of soil thing, a basement is just asking for trouble. So far, what Rick has been building up there now in the lots just around the corner from us, those are slab, and that's what we're encouraging most of the construction up there to be. But basically, some other things that we would bring to the table, we're attempting to finance most of this locally. We would partner with local builders. We would use materials from local vendors. And then, you know, I mean, kind of covering some of, you know, what is in the presentation there, traditional forms of housing do not meet today's needs in this town. Older adults primarily own single-family homes. They desire to remain where they are as they age. Cannon Falls is perfectly situated, become an age-friendly community, has kind of a smart growth plan going forward. We are just perfectly positioned. We're midway between the Twin Cities and Rochester. We have small-town charm. We have state-of-the-art medical services. We have an abundance of community-oriented and recreational opportunities for today's active senior. Basically, and again, I'm not sure if I'm overlapping with SEMCRA or not, and if that there's maybe something that we can work out together, but that is our proposal. It's definitely covered in more detail in what we handed out, but that is our hope, and we would be looking at, what we're asking the city council is to maybe have this workshop or do something. We need about two months to put all the numbers together, because we really want to work with the city so the city can recoup on some of the investment that they've, that, that they're into up there, but also find a way to make this go forward. And our timeline would be basically 2019 to get things rolling.
Question. Map-wise, I don't know.
Yes.
I don't have immediate recall. The yellow is where you're proposing.
The yellow is what we're proposing, and then the detail is.
You talked about east and west side. Can you reference those east and west sides versus this map?
This gentleman is on the east end, so he is talking about the east end.
Okay.
I am, yes. And basically, that's the flat we call it. The remaining area shaded in blue would be a mix of single-family housing, and that includes the area lower down off twenty-five in, what you call it, corridor, whatever that is. So.
Well, I mean, I do get east and west, obviously. That's north. I understand that. I just didn't know how much, like, this yellow thing is not all of that.
Yes, and that is where, that yellow section is where we're proposing the twin homes and fourplexes and.
I understand. I didn't know the nature of the geographical overlap is what I was trying to identify.
No, absolutely.
Well, I think it's something that, that we're going to need to look at. I mean, at, you know, at this point, I don't, I mean, with that, do we close the public hearing and table the resolution until we can get some more feedback?
Yeah, there might be somebody else, I don't know, in attendance that wants to speak, but, and maybe Mr. Wheeler has some comments too. It just seems to me that maybe there could be a, a work together on this one, but I don't know.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I mean, it's something to look at, I mean, either way. I mean, but I mean, just want to make sure that we're doing it the right, under the public hearing for this part of it.
Sure.
Is there's any more questions for Mr. Albrecht?
Well, the only thing I'll say, Robbie, is, is I just find life how ironic it is most of the while. We couldn't get anything moved on this in the past, and now we've got two great people here that want to move ahead with it. So now how do we do a balance? It's, and that's the way I'm looking at it right now. How do we all work together and make this work for everybody, because it's, they all have good intentions to invest, and the only thing I would say about it is ideal thing is the county gets that road through there, and we get that trail from there down to the trail, and I think it'd be an excellent, no matter who develops this. The, the one thing I will say that I do like, I do like dealing with local people, and him being where he works and stuff, and talks about working with local people, we don't have that guarantee lots at times with bigger outfits, so, but I don't want that to sway it one way or the other, but I still think it's a wonderful thing, but we need to have a lot more discussion about it.
Any other questions?
Well, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
You betcha.
Is there anybody else wishing to address the council under the public hearing for the Resolution 2311 under the Sandstone Ridge Development Plan?
Joe?
Joe, you want to come back up?
Yeah, what I'd like to comment on is this is one developer. I have not talked to this developer, but this could be one of hopefully two or three developers that may move a proposal forward. Keep in mind, SEMCRA, we're not the ones interested in owning or operating this facility, but allowing the opportunity to do an invite. So once we've got the property, number one, get it out of the foreclosure and got the property, we will be soliciting proposals, and this gentleman would be welcome to submit his proposal along with other proposals. And I'm optimistic. I'm not saying that this is what was he suggesting is a good. Um, I, and I'm optimistic. I'm not saying that this is what was he suggesting is a good idea, but this starts the process. Um, if you don't move forward on this and go with that, then, then you, the city, I mean, there's a process that still has to be, uh, gone through. So once we've solicited proposals, got an invite, um, we'll, we'll prioritize those, those proposals, work with the city, hopefully select one, two, or three proposals and move them forward. I think that's being extremely optimistic. Um, and then begin the process of getting, uh, the development done. So I, I, I wanna assure the council that it's not Semcra the one that's looking at owning and operating this. Um, it's just to help the city get the process going so we can get, uh, find a developer. A lot of things we need to look at with the developer, obviously, is, uh, their ability, what they've done in the past, all those things, what they're proposing costs, as he's indicating the numbers. Um, all that becomes key, um, as part of the selection of a developer to move a project forward. The east end was the one that made the most sense to us to start because it's closest to County Road 25, right?
Yep.
Um, so you don't have as much infrastructure you might not have to worry about. So I, again, I'm, I'm just going strictly off of what we know on, uh, based on the last report that was done.
Would you be able to, like he was saying, 2019 to start possibly?
It's up to the developer, so if we have a developer, that could be part of the planning process, that if he can move it forward, he's got the financing capability and the ability to move it forward. That's all positive, uh, positive thing for us approving. Again, he still has to go through all the city stuff, the planning and zoning and, and so on. And I'll be working closely with Ron and the mayor and, and other, at hot committee on. Uh, and in fact, I'll make a suggestion that you, uh, we might get two or three from the city that's part of the selection for a developer within the, within the city. But it begins the process.
Okay.
Question. Uh, when you solicit these proposals, would it be for workforce housing, or would you open it up so that?
We're open to elderly and/or workforce.
Okay.
Either or. There's a huge need. There has been market studies done. Um, I presented some of that information in the, um, redevelopment plan. There was, um, I think they're a couple of years old now, two or three years old. But we definitely have a high demand for elderly and, and Cannon Falls as well as workforce housing. So I, I think we look at them both and, and-
Your solicitation proposals, we brought enough to include those sorts of proposals.
That's correct. Yep.
I think it'd be interesting too to have a small area of mini homes. There's kids coming out of college. There's kids that are, uh, got a lot of debt and are working, and just like that kinda stuff.
Rent.
Uh, to me, one thing to think about up here, and I like the word better, is affordable housing. Um, it, we need to keep thinking about affordable housing because everything is getting so expensive nowadays. Unbelievable.
The plus on the elderly side, based on where you go with that, is hopefully that frees up some single family dwellings in the community and allows younger families to move in. So there's a win-win all the way around both ways. But I, I think it's, um, we set up criteria of what we're looking for. We'll work with the city on that for, for development. Um, this is the first developer that I've heard that actually had interest in coming in. That was the whole idea of soliciting and see if we can get, um, obviously, I'm hoping he'll continue to bring his proposal forward along with other proposals within the city. Or, not just in the city, but, um, uh, developers that are both for profit and nonprofit developers.
Any more questions for Joe?
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to address the council under the public hearing? Is there anyone else wishing to address the council under the public hearing? Is there anyone else wishing to address the council under the public hearing? If not, we will close the public hearing at this time, and the council, uh, needs to discuss or approve the resolution, or we can, uh, again, table it and look at, uh, both proposals and, and make a determination and later date also on this.
I got a question for Ron. If we, if we take and, uh, approve this to go ahead with it, and then next week, we have two people come in to Samantha and want permits, that they bought a lot from the county again, uh, does that hold that up, or can we still do that? Or if we lock in these certain lots, uh, then they can only be sold to them, or how does this work?
I spoke with Carolyn Holmston at the county, the county, uh, finance director, and she said that she would notify us of any future potential sales. And the reason it's, it'd be good to know that is just so somebody doesn't purchase a lot that all of a sudden, it's, it's on one of the streets that's in terrible shape that we have to reconstruct, that they don't purchase it assuming that we're just gonna automatically reconstruct that street with a new curb and gutter, et cetera. So she will let us know by parcel when she gets an interest in it. But, um, according to the statute, I believe, and Joe can correct me, but in working with this project over, probably over a couple, two, three years, um, we need to submit a plan. The county needs to see a plan from the city in order for them to sell the property to us or give the property to us. And we haven't produced that plan yet because we haven't, we haven't had one. Now, this is the first time that something's come forward.
Yep.
Um, as a, as a proposed redevelopment plan.
Yep, and there's certain, there's certain criteria, there's certain criteria under the statute, Leroy, that has to be met, uh, with that plan, depending on whether it's blight or other issues that come about so that it can be sold to certain individuals for some of these properties.
As you come up into the west, west end of that, uh, Sandstone Ridge, um, Chris and his wife have three lots there now, right?
Yes.
Uh, the three, first three lots on the left on Bluff Drive as you go up towards Sandstone to the east. And then somebody else just recently purchased, purchased the corner lot plus three lots up, so they've-
Right. I know.
So there's four, four lots there, seven, three across the street, three and four across the street from each other. It's once it gets further, uh, west than, or east than that, that it gets a little bit scary as far as the street, and there's gonna be some more expense and-
Right. And, and we do need to hear more about the road situation. Um, I mean, um, Tom mentioned one time that some of the lines have pulled off or something. Um, if that's really happening up there, then basically we're going down and completely replacing veins and everything. If, if, uh, if it's just settlement on the road, you could probably go down three, four feet and put a liner in there, keep the water out, and go back, fill it in. So there, there's a lot of issues there, and hopefully they can help us with that answer, or we should have a workshop about all this. So I, I just have concerns that we're, we're not tying ourselves into something we can't back out of if it doesn't go in the right direction.
My understanding is that this resolution is not tying us to anything. It's just permitting more of the ideas to be developed so that we can determine whether or not we want to tie ourselves to anything at a later future date, subject to workshops or other broader discussion. And in light of that, I'd make a motion to approve this resolution.
Second.
I have a motion by Cedar, and a motion, and a second by Mike, to approve Resolution 2311, uh, for the Sandstone Ridge Development Plan from Semcra. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Resolution passes five to one. All right, that moves us on to the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For those folks at home, we'll read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for accounting periods ending November the 30th, 2017. Item B are the meeting minutes for the November 21st, 2017 city council meeting. Item C, second reading and adoption of ordinance 355, amending chapter 152 of the Cannon Falls City Code concerning the zoning map and zoning classification of a specific property. Item D is second reading of, and adoption of ordinance 356 and approves summary publication of ordinance annexing certain property abutting the city of Cannon Falls. Item E, approve agreement with Goodhue County for the state building code administration. Item F, recycling contract extension. Item G, application for payment number one for the First English Church Bank erosion repair. Item H, application for payment number two for Alexander Court Project. Item I, Resolution 2312, designating polling places for 2018. Item J, Resolution 2313, adopting the public improvement and special assessment agreement for the Grand State Hotel. Item K, approve labor agreement with intent, uh, International Union of Operating Engineers, Local 49. Item L, Resolution 2315, providing for post employment health care savings plan. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down for discussion?
G.
F. Okay. Item G will become item 8C. And, which one was it?
Yeah.
And item F will become, which is a recycling contract, will become item 8D. Any others? If not, Chair, I'll pray, make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items F and G.
So.
Second.
I have a motion by Morris and a second by Ken. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ares. That moves us on to council business this evening. Uh, item A is Resolution 2314, adopting the 2018 tax levy and budget. Ron?
Thank you. Uh, as you're aware, city council, we've had, uh, four budget workshops and/or meetings regarding the budget. At the September meeting, we had to adopt a proposed or preliminary levy. And from there, we can't go any higher than that in December at this public input or public meeting for budget adoption. At that time in September, we were looking at a levy increase of 7.8%. And because the city did have a substantial tax capacity increase, which is good news, uh, the tax rate increase at that time would have been about a 2% tax rate increase for property owners. Since that time, at the last meeting, you directed staff to come forward with the proposal that's in front of you, which is a five and a half percent levy increase. But the tax rate, because of the increase in the tax capacity of the city, or the tax base, if you wanna call it that, this actually decreases the tax rate by 0.337%. And what that means, without going through all the, the, the boring data here, but the, uh, for a $200,000 market value home, property taxes would decrease. Now, this is just the city portion, not school or county or HRA or miscellaneous, uh, levies. Just the city portion would be $27 a year decrease. $250,000 home would be a $34 approximately decrease in property taxes for the year. Included in some of the highlights or lowlights, if you wanna call it that, the, uh, that includes a health insurance premium increase for employees of 9%. That was the premium. Uh, we're looking at about a 6% increase in premiums and then a 3% kinda overall because folks are getting older. And council implemented the classification and compensation study that was just recently done and approved. Included in that budget is the capital request of the Cannon Valley Trail of $34,700. And I guess that's, that's kinda the, but again, we've looked at this for, uh, this'll be our fifth meeting, fifth time around. Started the process in early August, or August 15th was our first workshop.
Yep.
And it's not a public hearing, but it is, it'd accept public input most certainly.
Yep. All right. Any discussion on the budget? If not, uh, Chair will take a motion to approve, uh, Resolution 20, where'd it go? Resolution 2314, adopting the 2018 tax levy and budget.
Some of them.
Second.
Motion by Mike, a second by Morris. Is there any discussion? Is there anybody from the public that wishes to comment?
Yes.
Please come forward.
First of all, I'm a little confused as to, Brent Reese, I live on Grove Street. Um, I'm a little confused as a procedure here, 'cause I got my, uh, proposed taxes sheet here, and it says at 6:30, there was supposed to be a meeting about property tax. And it seems like we're kind of a little bit of a footnote here somewhere near the end of the meeting.
Yeah, unfortunately, we double, double scheduled a 6:30 public hearing, so that-
By law, this is required to happen. Is that not correct?
At 6:30 or as close to nearby as you can.
Okay. Well, it sounds like you guys already voted on the, the resolution before you even had the meeting or had the hearing.
The vote is not taken twice yet.
All right. I think you all need to take better care on how you deal with that in the future then. I'm a little confused as far as the numbers you were, you were talking about, 'cause you're saying that my taxes should've went down, and when they went up by almost 12%.
What happens with that, Mr. Reese's? That is the preliminary that was-
Freeze, not Reese.
Freeze, okay, I'm sorry about that. What happens is, that's based off of the preliminary budget that we have to set back in September.
Mm-hmm.
Usually when we set the, the, once we set that budget, we cannot raise it, we can decrease it, which is what we-
I understand that.
And that's what we were looking to do. Those numbers were, what, if we didn't change anything, that's what the ta, that's what your property taxes would be.
Okay, but-
What you might see, excuse me, is, uh, you have a market value increase on there?
I do. I already have, went with the county on that and lost, but, um-
Yeah, 'cause this is if, is if your property valuation would've stayed the same. You would see, based on the proposal, the preliminary, about a 2% increase in the city portion of the taxes. But with this, it'll be a point, little less than a 1% decrease in the property, the city portion-
Well, you're, you're talking percentages, or what's the actual dollar amount of our budget for last year versus this year?
As far as-
How much money did the city budget last year versus how much they're budgeting this year?
Well, that, that breakdown is on, I'll let you take that from there, but, we've got a total levy of 2.654 million.
This year?
Correct. For-
For 2018.
For 2018.
And last year was?
2.515.
Call it 516.
2.516, you're saying?
Yes, sir.
Well, all right.
Yeah. Those are rounded.
What's a thousand dollars?
About 27,000 percentage point roughly.
All right, well.
And I can look at that with you too, if you wanna s-
'Cause I'm just looking here, I mean, last year, my taxes went up by close to 5%. And this year, they're going up by almost 12%. I'm talking just the city portion.
Yeah, last year was, I think it was a little over 4.4.3, somewhere near 4.2, 4.3% was what the, yeah, 3.13, I'm trying to deduct. Yeah, close to 3%, 4%. And this year, that flattens out.
They're gonna spend roughly $140,000 more this year than last year.
And a large part of that is attributable to health insurance increases. And then council did implement the, uh, classification compensation study that the city was about 6% under market is what we found as far as employee salaries.
All right, well, like I said, you're all are saying you're spending less. I see more there, and like I said, mine went up 12%. So, to me, it's not as rosy a picture as, as you guys just painted it here.
I didn't say we're spending less. I didn't say we're spending less.
The tax rate's less.
Tax rate's less.
Still, for me, it's completely different than that. I'm twelve times worse than that, because you're saying it went down by one point, whatever you said. And mine went up by twelve, so.
I can look at it with you.
Well, I'm already missing another appointment, so I gotta go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else wishing to address the council?
Jeff Holmanall, seven-ten Cannon Court, Cannon Falls. Just to kind of follow up on that, you're saying a decrease, but you also said there's an increase in the tax base, basically the value of the total property in the city, is that correct?
Yeah. That's correct. The levy increased by, the proposal here is five and a half percent. We had an increase in the tax capacity of about five point eight-five percent.
Okay, well, according to my valuation here, that, there's about a ten percent increase in valuation, so to me, that seems like basically a ten percent increase.
Is your property valued at that much higher?
Right.
Valuation, the market value?
Right.
Yeah, that's, this is, this is independent of the market value? This is just the tax rate?
That's what I'm talking about, is the tax valuation-
Yeah.
Has gone up ten percent.
And if, if you've got an issue with that, in April, the county does put on a-
Right, I understand that, but my point is really, even though you're saying a point two-four percent decrease in, in the levy, it's really still an increase, because the value increased ten percent.
Well, if your value increases, yeah, there, there's, there's going to be an increase.
Right, so what I'm, what I'm saying is, there's really a ten percent increase on the tax, and not really a cut. If you look at it from my perspective, my house went up, so I gotta pay more tax, based on a ten percent increase. You follow what I'm saying here?
Well, I hear what you're saying, but you're talking strictly from a valuation standpoint.
Right.
And cash out of pocket, I understand.
Right. That's, I mean, that's, what I have to go by is how much cash I got left in my pocket. And a ten percent increase, I mean, I'd love to have a ten percent increase in my paycheck, too, but the fact is, I probably make less now than I did, probably ten to fifteen years ago, so there's, I guess my point is, there are no easy solutions to this, but there are simple ones, and spending more is, always seems easy, but at the end of the day, you gotta find a way to keep things fair to the taxpayers as well.
Does the city have any influence over the valuation of real property?
No.
Okay, so that ten percent increase is not something that the city could do anything about, even if we want to do? The most that we could do is continue to, to impose negative percentage tax base, or tax rate for us, so-
Right, my, and I understand, I mean, my, the fact that my house-
Is worse more.
Is worse more is not necessarily bad news, but what I'm saying is, when you set your levy, it's based on a ten percent increase in property value, and not just a point-two-four percent decrease.
Okay.
Anybody else wishing to address the council on the levy? Okay, I've got a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose.
Oh.
Budget passes five-one.
Here we go.
Hey, that moves us on to item eight B, on council business tonight, the Cannon River Winery Expansion Request.
Who's leading this one?
I'm gonna take that right quick.
Oh.
It's just like a stop.
Yeah.
The Cannon River Winery is proposing to expand their building by approximately nineteen thousand forty square feet, directly, immediately to the west of their existing facility. They've, they've come to the EDA with, with some of their requests, and then the EDAs, and that, that information's included in your packet, as far as what the EDA was, has discussed. There's a memo in there from Community Development Director Maroni, as far as what the EDA has recommended, or what they will be determining, as far as their part of it. Because there's two different components here, there's the EDA component, and then the city council component. And perhaps, there's been a committee that's worked on the, from the city perspective, or from the EDA perspective, Mayor Robinson, Councilmember Althoff, and Roxanne, from the EDA president, and I don't know, Robbie, if you want to take it from there, or-
Well, I mean-
List of requests.
Well, I mean, we could, we can do that, I mean, the, we, we have a term sheet that was provided to us from Cannon River Winery. If you guys will look at the items down, circled in blue, are the items that, Ron Stoll, the owner of the winery, has requested, from the city's portion of it, the items in yellow, are the items that are being addressed by the Economic Development Authority.
And I know Mr. Stoll is anxious to talk about his project, too, if you want to maybe start from there?
We can do that, and then we can, then we can go from there. Ron, if you want to come up and-
Good evening, everyone. Ron Stoll, thirty-six, thirty-five, Great Oaks Circle, Eagan, Minnesota. Thanks for the invite to come up here and speak. I hope this is a little more interesting than tax levies. We'll save that for another day. You'll see, we have a number of participants here tonight, or guests. There's been a, I believe in complete transparency, and I've been involved with a lot of people here in the community, as relates to this. I bought the winery about eighteen months ago, from John and Maureen. They started this winery about fourteen, fifteen years ago, here in town. I understood there were some capacity constraints when I bought it. I didn't realize to what extent. We, the building was kind of set up with about a twenty-five hundred, thirty-three thousand square foot area for production. And that's good for about four thousand gallons of wine a year, on a typical basis. Sam, our winemaker, is here somewhere this evening, and he's been able to crank out close to ten thousand. But if any of you have gone through the winery, or through the parking lots, or anything else, you know, when we do bottling, or have grapes come in, or anything else, it's, it's pretty evident that we have exceeded where we're currently at. So, what we proposed, or what I proposed, is this expansion, and this will enable us to be a, you know, a co-located facility, have our production wine cellar, some warehousing, all under one roof, so completely enclosed, so you won't have any visibility of any type of production, you know, from the street. The businesses that I've, that I've worked with in the area are Althoff's Hardware, we have Ryan from Mill Street, we have, you know, Chris from Nick Steiner, we have, you can see the brewery representation here, we have Ferndales representing us here, and I think I must have run into twenty employees. And, because it does, it's not just us, it impacts whatever we do, good or bad, it impacts a lot of people in the community here. So, really, it's just going to be, we wanted to be, come up here, add some clarification if, as needed, to the council, give you some stats. We have approximately, currently fifty employees, we have on ten full-time employees, and approximately forty part-time. And it varies with the season, you know, it's a little busier in the summertime, and a little quieter during January, February, and March. We have approximately a hundred thousand visitors coming to the winery each year. As of the last twelve months, we perform about forty weddings, probably at least another dozen to fifteen corporate events. We do the school play. We have very significant brand recognition. We're one of the top wineries currently in the state of Minnesota, as far as both volume and wine quality, as we've seen a number of awards. We're the number one winery as far as the Minnesota State Fair. We're at the St. Paul Winter Carnival. You've heard some restaurants like Mancini's, where the host red and wine, they're, they're an iconic bar restaurant in St. Paul. Vino in the Valley, you know, they're, they're about forty miles from here, big place in Wisconsin. And Larry, who owns that, is also doing now Vino Above the Valley, and he's in a career all over wine out there, too. We've been pushing heavily into Wisconsin. I've been, I've hired another full-time sales manager, and Sam and I, which is our winemaker, have been spending a lot of time working with companies like Pigly Wiggly, Krogers, big national firms, to expand our presence. What that means to you is, it means a more vibrant local business. So, kind of, that's the background. If you have any specific questions to me, I'd be, you know, happy to answer them. The contractor that I have hired, and that would be actually building this facility, if we stay here in Cannon Falls, would be RJ Ryan. RJ Ryan is one of the top three, four contractors in the state of Minnesota, they do about two hundred million dollars here in business. I've worked with them in the past, and some of our employees have, their spouses, that are involved, and have, and employees of RJ Ryan are contractors, very reputable, high quality, and I encourage you to look them up. And that'll kind of turn it over to you gentlemen and ladies.
Anybody got questions for Ron?
Well, I mean, just a little bit more on the background, I don't know if any of you have ever gone on TripAdvisor, and we look at Cannon Falls, and, and if you're, if you're going to Cannon Falls, what's there to do? If you bring up TripAdvisor right now, the first thing that's listed on there is the Cannon Valley Trail. I mean, we're going to be contributing another, you know, forty, fifty thousand dollars to the trail again for the next ten years. Second thing on there is the Cannon Valley Winery. That's the next thing that comes up on TripAdvisor. Next thing is Ferndale Market, then it's the river, then it's the golf courses. So, I mean, as you can see, not only does, is a winery a mainstay in downtown, it's, it's also a destination spot for a lot of people that are, that are visiting our city, so. And this is something that, I mean, that I think we need to look at really hard. There's been a lot of negotiations, there's been negotiations going on, and there'll be, you know, continuing to be negotiations on, on different things through the EDA. I know Ron is, is kind of asking if we would get, when it comes to certain parts of negotiations, that we put it all in one, so we can negotiate with one group, instead of negotiating with, you know, two and three and four different entities as we, as we move forward. If we look at what is on the sheet for the request for the city, the-
Which page of the packet are you looking at?
I'm looking at page three.
Top left corner of the page.
Those are the ones circled in blue there.
Is that the most current status of where our negotiations are? It's not the part where there's on page nine of thirteen, where it says the EDA-
This is, this is the city stuff right here.
Okay, I get it.
Where the things are.
Well, let's start with the EDA first.
Okay.
All right. Go ahead, John, if you want to take that.
The, the land over there has been estimated at, which is west of the current winery building, has been estimated at about a hundred and seventy-five to two hundred thousand dollars. And the, the EDA has offered, you requested the land for a dollar, and the EDA met and offered it to you for seventy-five thousand, which I can see you've rejected.
Or has it just not been accepted?
It's just not been accepted.
Okay, those are different things.
Right.
Okay. So, that's kind of the first step, and I think we got to resolve that before we get into the-
Well, that's, that's, well, that's not with the council. We need to look at the council stuff tonight, guys. We're, that's the EDA, and the EDA is a separate entity of the council, on that portion of-
Yeah, but it all ties together, though.
Well, it will, but we, we still need to, to look at moving forward as, as a city portion, and look at what the term sheet is for the city, not just the EDA at this point. The EDA is, has been negotiating, you know, with, with Ron, on the EDA portion, the part that entails the EDA.
So, we should only be looking at the things in the blue circles?
We need to look at the blue circles at this time, and then-
Not the highlights. All right.
And then at that time, there's some other things that, that we can discuss and, and go forward, and on that.
Included in that first item, the land for a dollar, the property ID of fifty-two-one-hundred forty-one sixty is the, the approximate parcel that would be between the current Lee Chevrolet building and the winery, which is about forty-two hundred square feet is what that parcel would be if it was separated out. So, that would be a city, city issue that could ultimately be transferred to the EDA, but that's, that's a city issue.
And we'll, and we'll look at that portion here in, in a few minutes. Thanks for reminding me on that one. First thing there on item three, guys, is the replacement, abandonment, relocation cost of any costs related to utilities completed or paid by the city. If I'm not mistaken, Greg, the water and sewer are already there on that location?
Yeah, both lots have water and sewer service now.
Okay, so moving those, I mean, if, if anything had to be moved, it would be minimal.
I would anticipate part of the building construction.
Okay.
But that would be impacted by, if there were an environmental cleanup that had to be occurred, which I understand is an EDA expense, that could impact existing utilities, couldn't it?
Maybe.
Okay.
The septic system in the back, is that going to need a, a study on it, or where's that at?
That'd be part of the EDA work, or the environmental work the EDAs haven't done.
Yep. Right now, Leroy, the EDA has approved the environmental work, phase one, phase two, that's already in work on that lot. It was determined that it needed to be done, so we know what's there, no matter what project was there, so that is already in work. Second item on there is a design and install sidewalk on the west side along the river. That's been previously discussed with the EDA about putting a sidewalk coming up from the trail. I think the cost on that, Greg, was between forty and fifty thousand, somewhere like that, to make it ADA accessible.
You got a pretty good grade to get down to that next parking lot, so, yeah, that's, that's the ballpark we're looking at.
So, where would that sidewalk go? I'm looking at a, at the overhead view on page eight of our packet. It's got the red square on the, the one lot. Where would the sidewalk be?
The west.
It would be in the, the EDA lot that's all between the Lee Chev site and the hill going down to the bike trail.
Right.
Okay, so it would come off of Mill Street?
It would come off of Mill Street and go down to the parking lot of the trailhead, not to the trail along the river.
Gotcha.
And the EDA bought that for that purpose?
Right.
So, that, that was thought of already, then? That's not-
Right. The other item would be any applicable plating, and other applicable land use applications completed and paid for by the city, to be contingent upon the, upon it moving forward. Plating is, is very negligible as far as cost go, getting that done. And the last thing is pay-as-you-go tax abatement for fifteen years, and estimates from the city and the county. I know that Ron has spoken with the county-
We have.
On abatement, and from what I'm understanding, the county would be willing to look at abatement also. If, if the city decides to do abatement, the county would also help with this abatement purpose, or go along with that.
They seemed very receptive to the council.
Yeah, they were very receptive to the idea, on, on the abatement side. It fits within their, their EDA, because it would be production just in that new portion of the building.
So, underneath that item, it says if county is unwilling to participate, we talked about the TIF, and that, that number is considerably lower than, than the tax abatement. Is there, is there a reason to go with one versus the, the other?
Dave, Dave Maroni from the EDA up here, he can explain that a little better, to make sure we put it out the right way.
You thought sitting in the back was going to get you out of this, didn't you?
I was hoping.
I was hoping. Real simple, I guess, explanation on the differences between the tax increment and the tax abatement relative to Ron's request. The fifteen years of tax abatement, county and city, are projected based on Peggy Treble's valuation estimate for the proposed addition. Over the fifteen-year period is the five hundred and thirty-three thousand. In that case, the city would approve the abatement for just the city portion of the taxes. The county board would have to approve an abatement of just the county taxes. Would be two different approvals, city and county. If both jurisdictions approved it based on the numbers that we've been using over the fifteen-year period, it would amount to the five hundred and thirty-three thousand. The alternative that we discussed with Ron is just a tax increment financing district alone, which would just be a city determination. And in this case, the nine-year projection is the maximum term that we could use tax increment for this type of project in that location. So obviously at a three hundred thousand dollar tax increment, where the city can take the portion of the taxes that the city generates and the county, just with your approval, like we have for Artisan Plaza or formerly Grandpa's Garage, Dave Olson. The city approved a tax increment financing district for that project, and you were able to capture both the city portion and the county portion. But it was your decision, county had no requirement, no authority to veto a decision by the council. So again, in this case, we can't easily create a tax increment district through the city process alone beyond the nine years statutorily, that's the difference.
Okay, so the time, the time?
The timeframe.
Timeframe is the big difference.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, and I may have missed it, and/or this may be a foolish question, but we're talking about taxes on just the newly developed portion of these now, it will be one parcel eventually, right? But we're talking about just taxes on that. So the continuing stream of revenue from the existing winery, what's today the winery, would continue unimpeded?
Yes.
Okay.
I didn't hear that part, Dave. The existing building would stay the same?
Yeah, there's no abatement proposed in these numbers or in these projections, no abatement or no tax increment for the existing wine rebuilding. Ron still continued to pay taxes as he always would, city, county, school, against the existing wine rebuilding. It would only be the addition, the nineteen or twenty thousand square foot addition. That tax base would be captured either by abatement or tax increment.
So basically, he'd still be paying taxes on the, and I know that building sets, yep, I know that building sets on two parcels that he's paying taxes on now. Any other discussion or any more questions for Ron on this?
I got a few, Ron. You know, the one thing I hate about this stuff is if things aren't going good, then you got to try to figure out how to make it better. And then when things are going good, then we also got to figure out how to make it better. So this, I'm excited about that you want to do this expanding and invest in the town and that kind of stuff. I also know that we've got a heck of a parking problem down there. And everything I look at that you want to do seems to me like it's going to create more parking problems. So now I'm not just looking at, at your building and giving the store away to keep you here and do this, but what do we do with the parking situation? We also, if there's going to be parking someplace else and be kind of a shuttle, I haven't heard anything about that. I know we got a terrible situation with bus drops off in the front and with the angle parking that's there now. And hopefully in the design, something better comes out of that with buses dropping people off up there. So I don't know, it's, it's so hard to know what to do with because we take and turn that road, shut that road down and you build your new building across there. Then we turn around and shrink our existing parking, which we really need when we have the farmer's market there. And I know they're talking about going to Grandpa's Garage, but that hasn't been decided. So now we create a situation where you're either going to have the same existing parking there or more parking, and then we've only got one inlet into the place. So how do we turn around and work with the state and get another two inlets or one inlet, one outlet? So your growing problems really concern me that, it just makes quite a mess out of the parking and the road situation down there. And if I would have had the ideal situation and known about this a year ago, to me, the ideal situation would have been is we should have had you out to Grandpa's Garage and we should have had Grandpa Garage in Cannon Falls. You'd have had all your parking and all the room you needed out there. I would hope there would be a better place or a better investment for you. I think you're not only doing the retail, you're doing the manufacturing too. And I totally understand your expansion problems in the winery situation. But I also know that the two guys earlier talked about our tax base going up when it ain't supposed to and all this. We talked about in our tax budget that we had roughly about four hundred thousand dollar income last year extra, and we still went up another one percent almost. So it isn't that I'm against the winery, but I think there's a better spot for it. Ideal situation would be you'd buy them all out there and we'd move some of them people back downtown. So I'm not here to tell you that I'm against it or for it. I'm just telling you how I'm thinking about the whole overall project. That it's another investment that the town is making in a business for fifteen years. And our taxes keep going up. So I want to wish you the best, thank you for thinking about doing this, but to me, it really caused a lot of problems. And the ideal situation to me with the old Lee Chevrolet building would be is, restrooms in there and a community room on one end overlooking that river and, and stuff of the trail. But I also know or listen to you, read your stuff where you need to expand and you need more room, but I just don't feel it's a good area for it. Thank you.
Thanks, Leroy, I appreciate your comments. I'd like to address probably each one of them singularly. First of all, as far as I take exception that there's not a road going through there. I think it's been addressed before with the council. I believe there's been research done on it. It's not a road, it's not an alley, it's not a game trail, okay? It is an entrance and an exit to a parking lot. And the second issue as far as parking, right now, there's, you know, thirty to forty parking spots in there right now. I've owned it for a year and a half, last twelve months, we've had a hundred thousand customers, okay, through that facility.
I heard that.
Not one time, okay, since I've been there, I'm there on almost every single weekend, have I heard of one customer complain that they didn't have adequate parking and they couldn't get to in or out of my facility. That's a big thing, okay? If we added thirty more parking spots somewhere else, would that relieve any tension? Not much. By eliminating thirty parking spots, it's also not going to restrict the city significantly. So what people are actually doing is they are finding spots on streets and at the parking lots and expanding their footprint. What that forces people to do is walk into the diner, okay, the new brewery, to stop by the new antique store, walk by the hardware store. They actually are required to actually walk through the city and makes the city vibrant. And I've been down there on many weekends and you can just walk around the community down there, and it's very, very busy, okay, in a very positive way. Without the winery, you're right. If we move, and we do have alternatives, okay, we've checked into a couple of cities, not playing the hand heavy, because I've been very, very straightforward. I would prefer to stay in Cannon Falls. But if necessary, we have two other cities that are laying out the red carpet for us. And I don't think you'd have any problem with parking in that spot then at that point going forward. Unfortunately, I think it's going to impact a lot of the other businesses and their families and their employees. We have fifty employees alone, and I've made commitments to those fifty employees, okay, that we're going to have a top-notch facility. It's either going to be here or someone else. There's career pass, okay? I still believe in that. I've owned small businesses, I like to develop people. I told Sam, our winemaker and assistant winemaker, that we're going to have a state-of-the-art facility. I hired a new full-time sales manager just a few weeks ago, okay, because we're expanding operations, okay? Kathleen, which is sitting right here in her place and is grew up here, she wants to develop further as a general manager. So, I mean, we are directly involved, and a lot of these employees live right down here in Cannon Falls currently. So I may come across a little bit passionate about this, but what we are doing is trying to come up with a facility that will be the nicest winery in the state of Minnesota, okay? And it's going to keep you on the map. It's going to be a destination for a lot of people to come to. You know, I live a few miles north here, about twenty miles north here, and it pulls people from the Twin Cities, the demographics, from Rochester right now, from the east side of Wisconsin. So you're getting a huge draw. They come in here and they spend money. The new hotel came down here. You know, we're going to book forty to fifty weddings to keep his hotel busy. Without that, he says, his whole business model goes to shut, okay? Because that's not what he was planning on. He said he was lured to Cannon Falls specifically because of that. I know it's not my issue, but someone's have to explain to them, okay, why the decision was made if it was the other direction. So I know, I appreciate your comments, but I wanted to give you a rebuttal to those statements.
Well, the one thing I will argue with you is that the winery is a special thing. We, how do I say that? People love to ski, so they, there's people out there that ski and go nuts over it. There's people that love wine and go nuts over it. I'm fine with that. But I will also say that it is a community thing, and it is about everybody else too, that there is going to be people that come to Cannon Falls to go to Thor May, and they're going to say, let's stop over to the winery, it's just down the street here. So it isn't all about the winery bringing people to Cannon Falls. The other thing I will say with the people coming to Cannon Falls, I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but also we do have to furnish protection and safety and ambulance and all that. So the more traffic we have, the more we're inclined to spend money on that end too. So I'm thinking about the whole overall picture.
And I believe these people right here, you're looking at right here, the vast majority of them, probably differ with your concept as far as saying you don't want to have people coming here to Cannon Falls to spend money. These are business owners right here, these are employees. This was a lousy weather day. If it had been a good weather day, we probably had twice the amount of people showing up here. So as far as, a lot of these people are passionate, they're taking their evening off to come here to sit, and a number of them would like to speak, if you want to give them the floor as far as what it means to them.
Well, and, you know, I'll tell you, I met with Chris about it, so he gave me his input.
Oh, we have more than Chris here.
Okay, okay, so we're not going to make this going back and forth between you guys on this portion of it.
Whether or not business is good for Cannon Falls, of course it is.
Yes, okay. I mean, and just to answer Leroy's question, Jeff, have there been any issues providing protection or safety to?
No, excuse me, no, not per se. The, you know, type of incidents that we have would be just the standard ones we would have in any other part of the city. You know, when the, you know, as Ron well knows, when it's busy on Mill Street, we haven't had a significant number of accidents or anything that, you know, when I've looked at the numbers that jump out, that put that at any more at risk than any of the other streets that we have in our downtown area.
And actually, when we have our weddings, we've had Jeff and Jeff's staff, okay, monitor and sit at our weddings to make sure that we don't have any issues at there. I think we only had one little incident way before my time, I think it was addressed quickly. One individual had too much to drink and he was cut off.
And that's not something that, you know, just started when the winery started having wedding receptions, they contracted with the city to have officers for all of their wedding events. And we've continued that to this day. And Ron is correct, I think we've only had one or two where they were just cases where somebody had a little bit too much and tried to do a few things they shouldn't do. And they were quickly resolved. His staff is fabulous to work with relative to the events that we've had officers there.
So I have a question for Robbie and for our Ron. What type of, I mean, what's, this says discuss project and request. So what, I mean, what type of action are we looking for tonight from us?
Well, I think tonight, what we're looking for tonight is going to let Ron know that we would be willing to negotiate with him on possibly, I mean, on the abatement, which it'll be a further discussion going on with that. And then also, we need to look at the piece of property that is, that's owned by the city, the portion that abuts the EDA property. Yeah, the parking lot interest. We need to look at that portion, which is, like I said, that forty-two hundred square feet of property. And if we're going to do something there, we need to make a determination on what type of price we would put on that so that he knows what that is, so that as we go forward in negotiations, if he says he accepts it, fine. If he doesn't, then, you know, he comes back with something else and we go from there. I mean, it's just standard negotiations and trying to do what we can to meet, you know, his needs and the city's needs at the same time going forward. And I would like to, I think that, and then also possibly, like I said earlier, having it to where he's dealing with one entity instead of having to deal with multiple entities going on that. I would like to invite any of the other business owners in town that may want to speak on this to come forward and let us know on any of this. Like I said before, when people come to hear about Cannon Falls or come to Cannon Falls, there's two or three different items that are two or three different things that come about. And if we don't grow, if we don't keep moving forward, then we shrink and go away.
And obviously, the floor is open, we want you to be heard and feel heard, but almost without exception, I don't think there's anyone up here that is, that misunderstands the importance of the winery and the related entities, not the winery alone, but in a symbiotic sort of thing with all of the downtown businesses, and what that brings to the vibrancy and the life in Cannon Falls, not just to visitors, but also to people who live here, so.
Thanks, Cedar, I don't want to waste the council's time either if it's redundant, so.
The only thing I've got, a problem is, I know you'd rather see the EDA basically put it in one group.
Right.
Right, which is fine. But they would negotiate what's going on, and you've been there. But if we don't come to terms, then what?
Well, if we don't come to terms, a combination of the EDA and the council has to make a decision, either they want us to stay or they want us to move. And it's, you know, I'm at the point where, you know, I'm forced to make a decision.
But you have to also negotiate with us too.
No, I hear what you're saying. And no one's established any, you know, parameters that can't be adjusted, okay? But we are apart, but is there a room to make an agreement? Yes. But what I guess I'm looking to the council to say is I need a, you know, a very, very warm and fuzzy, okay? Because my next step right now is to go to the next step in plans. I've already spent a significant amount of money with, you know, initial plans. I've hired, you know, a consultant, which is helping with the economic development. She's done a great job, and she's her night, Annie Duckert. And she's worked with the EDA and Ron and, where's it, Dave Maroney? But the next step is to spend about thirty-five, forty thousand bucks. And that's to do, you know, like civil engineering drawings, structural drawings to get firm bids. And our objective is to break ground on or about April fifteenth. And it's just not a casual day that's tossed out there. It's going to take four, four and a half months with RJ Ryan, and it will be done in that period of time. It'll be contractually stipulated. And that'll allow us then to get into the fall harvest, okay? If we miss that window of opportunity, we're going to have a real, real challenge having, you know, a couple hundred tons of grapes come in and have a building going up at the same time with our current situation. So we're trying to adjust and make the accommodations necessary.
Couple of questions.
Yeah.
What's the operation of the winery, the existing winery during the period of construction? I might have missed that in here. It's going to be operating full speed?
Full speed, just like it is right now, Cedar.
Okay. I have an idea, can I just say that? Okay. So the valuation that you mentioned that the EDA had done on the other parcel that the EDA owns, is that just on that parcel? They didn't include the parking lot entrance? Okay.
That's not included, and for that portion of it, we.
That rough figure that you mentioned, John, that hundred and is whatever.
For that portion of that, if we were to make a determination on that, we would have to go to closed session tonight, so we.
No, I get it, I get it. I'm not going to talk about money or the dollars, but couldn't we, as the council, sort of assign our interest for purposes of this, for purposes of having that land deal closed without having to negotiate two separate things and us having to calibrate, well, based on the square footage that we're talking about and that there's no structures? Well, based on the square footage that we're talking about and that there's no structures on it, but no construction versus the other, you know what I mean? We could just assign it and say, EDA, handle all the property, we could.
That's kinda, that's what I'm probably not trying to do.
That's what he's talking about.
I understand, but well, you're saying combine it to, to one. It, whether that's the council or the EDA was yet undetermined. I'm saying we could assign the property to the, to the EDA, but couldn't we keep and sort of put a pin in the tax stuff until after other deals got handled? No, you would, you would, you would tie your price that you were willing to pay, obviously, whether or not the abatement was really.
Overall package, uh, I said, if we could accomplish.
Abatement to the EDA.
Well, the abatement has to go through, that, that has to come through us.
Okay, it has to.
That portion of it has to come through the council and be approved by the council.
Okay.
That's also, council also, uh, if I remember right, Robbie, we have also an application to the county, to Goodhue County.
Right.
So that's kind of like a two-step process.
Got it.
I guess tonight, uh, a great accomplishment would be to get the, the two parcels into one. So that it's clear for me then, where I stand from a negotiation standpoint, it's clear then for the city, okay, between the EDA and the city itself, where they stand point. Come to quick resolution on that and then allow us to move to the, the next step as far as, you know, tax abatement or utilities or whatever else. But, uh, that would give me a, a strong enough feeling then to say, okay, everyone's serious here and to start real drawings and really start to move this thing forward.
Just a quick question for you, is, is your expansion there, is that about the manufacturing end of it? Are you gonna have more convention centers or something like that? Or i- i- is there, and I think I know what your answer is gonna be, is, is there some reason you can't just keep the winery and have the manufacturing someplace else? Uh, I, I'm sure it's more convenient or something, but, uh, how does this building enter into it? Is it more about manufacturing or is it more about more people coming?
Actually, it's, it's, it's all tied. Uh, the actual, uh, facility that we're adding on is about nineteen thousand, between nineteen and twenty thousand square feet. We're gonna have six hundred square feet of office space in there. Right now, we have, uh, no offices, okay, currently in our facility. Uh, if you, I said, if you stop by the winery, Kathleen is working in a, in a broom closet. And, and that is not a made-up number, it's, uh, it's, it's, it's four foot by six feet, okay? It's, wouldn't pass probably health code. Uh, so we're gonna have a half a dozen offices for people to actually be able to work at in a safe, clean environment. Uh, we're also gonna carve out a nice patio, which is gonna be right next to where the existing facility is right now and it's an extend, extend along Mill Street. So that'll be around, again, around fifteen to seventeen hundred square feet of the total footprint. Uh, so, so that, and the remaining portion of it is gonna be manufacturing, okay? That's where we do the, we're gonna take the current tanks, if you've been in our facility, or the current tanks in production facility, move it in there. We're gonna expand our tasting room that we have right now, when I say expand, it's the same facility, same footprint. We're just gonna fill in the space where the tanks currently are and add additional tables. And the plan is to put in, you know, some additional, uh, food items, which has been requested by the, the city already to me.
So the, the memo indicates that the purpose of this nineteen, approximately nineteen thousand square foot is to increase capacity, add a new filtration system, expand the tasting room and add a brick fired pizzerie, pizzeria with a goal of doubling production to twenty, two-hundred-and-forty thousand bottles per year. New equipment, tanks, barrels, cooling system, also will include six thousand square feet of warehouse space? Or at least you'll no longer have to rent that elsewhere, you'll use the new space for that purpose?
That, that's correct.
Right, so this information is presented in the writing.
Yep.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and, and the total project, uh, Cedars and the staff, it's, it's gonna be upon one point eight million dollars. It could vary, it could push up to two million, but it's probably gonna be between one seven and two million. So that gives you kind of, one, one eight was a kind of a real good target right now.
And your design will eliminate the problems we have with trucking and forklifts and.
Yeah, that, the reason we really.
Off your own property instead of off parking lot back.
And not always gonna be on our own property, it's actually gonna be all enclosed, so it won't be an eyesore. I do a, for, for, for like sense of manufacturing background and to have it the way it is, is, it's, it's pretty chaotic. And to have it all enclosed, it'll be extremely clean and, uh, again, from a city standpoint, it's, it's, again, safer, cleaner, better looking.
I'm personally all for the winery, I've sat in on the EDA meetings, I've met with Ron a few times and I'm all for it. I, I'd like to see, you know, us move on, make a, you know, deal with the EDA or if it means combining the two to make it work, I wanna see it. I like to see it get going here.
I'd make a motion if I knew what motion to make.
I think we're making a motion to com- combine for purposes of negotiation, the two parcels.
For, for the two parcels, so.
And assign.
EDA.
Yeah, right.
Pardon me?
The EDA to do that?
Well, we can, right, we combine them, we, we permit the EDA to negotiate the sale of it.
And then come back to us again.
No.
Is that right?
They would negotiate the sale, I mean, uh, of the two parcels totally.
Yeah, that part, they would not come back to us for, for the permissions.
EDA is autonomous as far as like the property purchases, they, they can sell it.
Yeah.
And we don't have to come back and approve it. Yeah, correct?
Right, but we could agree on a price if we so desired that we would accept that they, uh, offered in with their packet, I mean, with their piece of property.
Oh, like a reserve amount, if it was a bid sort of thing.
And the peace, the peace in mind is a hundred and twenty feet deep and about thirty feet, thirty-five foot wide, plus or minus in that. Cuz it's not defined.
I mean, there's nothing that can really be done with it, it's, uh, like I said, it's the, you can't build on it, I mean, it's an entrance in and out of the.
Parking lot.
You know, that's, that's, that's all it's being used for.
So I move, I'm taking the steam, I knew the motion. I move that we, uh, combine the part, for purposes of negotiation, combine the parcels and assign the authority to negotiate the sale of that combined parcel with the winery to the EDA.
I'll second it.
All right.
A motion by Cedar and a second by Mike. To, uh, combine the two parcels, uh, for the sale of the property, for the winery expansion to the EDA to, for negotiation purposes.
I wanna abstain, rally, Robbie.
Actually, the motion could only, would only need to be the one parcel, cuz the EDA already has control of the, the big parcel.
Right, right, so.
It's the portion of parcel fifty-two.
Oh, right.
Right.
One hundred and forty-one.
I want them to combine it and talk about one parcel in the sale, not to treat it like, here's the one that we have and then here's the one that we have on behalf of the city. Just, it's one, okay.
So parcel fifty-two, one zero zero, forty-one, sixty.
Right.
Um, which would be these.
That's, that's the current EDA property.
Right.
Right.
So forty-one.
The five twenty-one, zero zero, four, one, one, zero. The portion, the forty-two, approximately forty-two hundred square feet.
Right.
Uh, that we allow the EDA to, to, uh, we'll combine it and have them take care of that. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes. Okay, uh, also, and then, uh, what we'll do is, uh, going forward, we'll, uh, work with the EDA to, to come up with a price and, and negotiate that part of it and then, uh, uh, with that also, we'll, uh, once we get to that point, then we'll start working on the abatement and everything else moving forward and try to get this project going.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, before we move off of it, since there's some low hanging fruit in the list of the things that the city could handle, is there any sense, since we're all here and it's all fresh in our mind, could we tackle one quick? Like, I would move that the city, uh, complete and pay for applicable plating and other applicable land use applications contingent upon the project moving forward? Just to get it out of the way.
Yep.
So that's my motion.
Second.
Yeah, I got a motion and a second, that, uh, the city take care of any applicable plating and other applicable land use applications completed and paid for by the city here contingent upon project moving forward. Any further discussions? Mike, you seconded that, right?
I did.
Yep. Alls in favor?
Well, okay, sorry.
Got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion on that? That would be the third item down on page three there. Are the.
Of the blue circles.
Of the, of the blue circles.
Right.
I'm in favor.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Motion passes.
Is there any reason we can't just do the other two?
I don't wanna, I don't, I'm not ready for the sidewalk, there's too big of a price tag on it, I wanna see a plan.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll look at the, I mean, we'll, we can work on getting that done, I mean, I think, uh, that's.
Saying no.
Greg, I mean, you had done, uh, in the past, you had done a projection on that, I think it was like fifty thousand.
And really, that's, from my standpoint, you know, that's not a.
Right.
A hard, because that's not really for me, it's, I'll be one of the numerous people on Mill Street that'll benefit by it, but.
Okay.
Right, not saying no.
I think it's good to the city.
More straight.
I understand.
Yeah.
And we'll look at that portion of it. Uh, how about the replacement and abandonment relocation cost of any utilities?
I'm agreeing for that.
Okay.
So I would make a motion that, uh, the city complete and pay for applicable costs related to replacement, abandonment or relocation of utilities.
Okay, motion by Cedar, second.
I'll second.
Second by Morris, to, for the city to, uh, pay for replacement, abandonment, relocation cost of any applicable costs related to utilities completed and paid for by the city. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed. Darius.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming tonight, Ron.
Thanks for coming tonight.
Thanks for your support.
And thank everyone for coming, it is, it's a powerful show of support.
Thanks, guys, very much. Have a good evening.
All right, it's time, we're gonna move on to item eight C, which is the first English, uh, first payment for the first English parking. Or first English, uh, where'd it go here?
First English church bank washout.
Church washout.
Yeah, the only quick question for Greg on that, is there some reason that, uh, we went with the sod up on top instead of concrete?
We thought it'd fit better with the surrounding areas and the turf. I mean, we can, we can monitor in the spring how it goes, but that's what we went with, was just the turf in front of the catch basin. We extended the berm like you talked earlier and put an overflow over the top, so I'm curious to see how it's gonna perform, but it'll probably be a few months before we get rain now to, to see if it works.
What, uh, and then the other concern I had is the sump drain that's halfway down the hill, um, with the large rock in there, it's really hard to get to it. And I'm very concerned about that it, kids are gonna monkey round on that and somebody's gonna roll a rock and get hurt. So are we gonna fence around this or, or can we go to a inch and a half rock and put over the top of the big rock? Or at least make a walkway through that sump pit? To me, I just, I, I think it's a safety issue.
Well, the, uh, it, it's an improvement from what was there, the work that was all done in the right of way, so it would be the city could fence it if you wanted to. We can talk with Tom of Public Works to see, you know, what's the frequency of them having to get to that catch basin to even clean it out? And do we put up a fence at the top on the end of the sidewalk? That would be up to the city, all the improvements we did are within the right of way the city has, so you could.
No, I thought we were gonna have a, uh, catch basin on the bottom. It's the way it looks right now, it's gonna go into, oh, what's the name, I know.
Holt.
Holtz, yeah, lawn, the way it, you know, if we get it, it's just gonna come in and go.
No, there's a catch basin at the top and that's what the berm, the berm kinda surrounds the backside of it. That, there's a pipe then to a separate structure most of the way down.
Right.
That, that will, um, slow the water down, the water will come over the top on a big event and down the rip wrap. There's a smaller pipe out the bottom to completely drain that structure between events. If for some reason the structure on top plugs, grass clippings, leaves, then it would build up and have to go around the berm, but by then it would go over the top where we have a reinforced overflow, if you will. So I would be very surprised if, if we ever got any water to the north.
You got a reinforced overflow in there?
We put a little, we put a, a low point in the berm, if you will, so it, before it went too far.
In the middle, you mean?
North and south, it would go over the top and down the rock. If, if that, um, inlet were to plug on top, we got a casting on there that will take a lot of flow and, and prevent a lot of stuff to get through there and, and shouldn't flood.
Okay. I saw these costs, weren't we talking about FEMA taking care of this at one time or what happened there?
The way that it works is the city has to incur the expense, then we make the submission and then FEMA. Well, actually, the state reimburses us on behalf of FEMA.
Okay.
And so to Leroy's question, as far as putting, you know, smaller, uh, you know, inch and a half or some other class gravel on it, that would be outside the parameters, so that would be our, our expense a hundred percent. We can make a request for FEMA, but I doubt they would grant it. It took a lot just to get this, this, um, improvement project done as opposed to just filling it in and rip wrap.
Well, those work had, had to be done, whether, but FEMA would be a plus if it will happen.
So a significant portion of this, if not all of it, will be covered under the, the FEMA reimbursement, assuming we came in on budget.
And you're asking us to approve a payment for work that's already been done?
Right.
Right.
I'll make a motion we approve.
Second.
Yeah, motion by Mike, second by Ken, to approve, uh, application for payment number one for first English church bank erosion repair. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Passes. Moves us on to item eight D, which is the recycling. And John, you had a question on that.
I just had a question, preliminary, they were talking about rate increases for the first five years and they, they varied in price. And then the contract, it's set at, uh, three dollars and twenty-six cents per CDU. Is that a, something you just agreed on or how did that work? I, I didn't hear that one.
Yeah, the, uh, Gibson sanitation is keeping the rate the same as the existing rate for five years.
Is that present rate?
Yeah. And it's been present for what, almost ten years?
It's been at least eight years, I think, like.
Okay, no problem.
I think we got a good agreement with them and I certainly like to support the local.
Yeah.
I was concerned that.
Reach out for us.
Um, that we had to put it out on bits and if we don't have to, you'll make me happy because I'd like Gibson to just.
Yeah, I feel the same way.
City Attorney Knutson and he said no.
Okay, thank you.
Make a motion?
Motion.
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion by Leroy, second by Morris, to approve the recycling. Contract for Gibson. Any further discussion? Alls in favor?
Aye.
Posed. Darius, that moves us on to reports. Sam. Tom?
I have nothing.
Chief?
Well, we are in the middle of a towards zero death wave. We are a participating agency with the Goodhue County effort, that's a statewide effort. So right now, the, the focus is on impaired drivers. So if you're going out for a Christmas party or enjoying yourself on a weekend, bear that in mind, there is extra patrols out. Plan ahead, have a designated driver, walk, take a cab, uh, just stay off the, uh, off the roads. If you are drinking, don't drive. Go ahead.
Mike?
Yeah, I just wanna take a minute and commend Tom and his, uh, street crew. Like, there's no way that could be an easy job last night when we got rain followed by snow. But I thought the roads were, were pretty drivable compared, uh, you know, to what they could've been and, and, uh, I just wanna say that I, I enjoy seeing your staff out and about around town, they're, uh, it's always fun to stop and kinda shoot the crap a little bit with them and everybody seems to be, uh.
That's why they fill your driveway with snow.
No, they're, they're never on the clock, they're always on break. Oh, no, I didn't mean it that way.
Right.
I didn't mean it that way at all, sorry about that.
You're gonna get them all in trouble, Mike.
I rescind that, uh, but no, it's, it's good to see the local guys out there and, uh, they look like they enjoy their job as much as, you know, somebody can when they're hanging Christmas wreaths in the cold weather and stuff. I'll just be quiet for a second. Please.
Cedar?
Uh, yeah, I really wanna thank, um, staff and the department heads who, we managed to do a lot. We met rising healthcare costs, which are, you know, endemic, right? We were able to fairly compensate our employees, we're able to plan responsibly for, um, infrastructure. And we did all that while, thanks to some property valuation stuff, the rising, I get it, wasn't totally heroic measures on our part, but we did some heroic measures, we didn't, the council didn't say yes to everything. Uh, we had to say no to some things that I think, you know, there, there were, there was real need for, but we had to prioritize, we had to make tough decisions. You guys found ways to cut and save and I think we had a really great result, I'm pleased with how it worked. I don't think we'll be able to do that every year, right, have a negative property tax thing, but we were able to do it this year while still accomplishing some important goals. And I think there's, biggest room in the world is the room for improvement, so, but this year, we have, we have plenty to be proud of as well, thank you.
I just have a couple of comments, I, I'd like to see, we kinda let, uh, Joe Wheeler and his group go ahead with, uh, Sandstone. But let's don't leave out Chris's proposals too, I, you know, maybe something you can work together on because I don't want to, I, I like your idea of local, local merch and everything else, so I'd like to see some kind of, uh, cooperation there and I think it'll work out.
I'm hoping it's such a big job that there will be so much collaboration available. Do you think?
Yeah.
I think it's such a huge job, that's plenty of room for anyone who wants to do some work, so, yeah.
And then I have one request, maybe for Greg. What's going on at the library? Are they still having problems in there with the...
We hired a third party to do a forensic review of the leak that's still is prevalent, and we're waiting for them to get their results back to us, and then we'll meet with the staff, with staff and discuss what they come up with and what remedies they might recommend.
Just one thing here. With the winery thing here tonight, I couldn't help but think about how everything becomes a partnership in our town. And I want to bring up the fact that we had a family ninety-year-old birthday party out at the Occasion Center at the mall. Somebody has invested in this and made a great center out there for us without any investment from the city. We also got the Northside Occasion Center here that somebody invested in. We also have got Thor May that moved downtown. We got Sue's garage sale things that are going on. We got the Grappa's Garage thing that is going to totally be remodeled into a big business center. And, and I just wanted to bring them things up, because every little thing ties everything together, and it's important. And the other thing that was so amazing this week, I had a call up at the old Creamery on top of the hill, and there's a gal that moved in the back up there on the third floor, and she's doing art in a beads thing up there. So I'm just, I just want to thank everybody, I don't care if you're a garage sale person or what it is, for investing. And it's not just the winery brings people to town, it's all these as a group. Thank you.
Ken?
Well, I see we've survived our first brush with winter, and hopefully we can stay away from the rain before it freezes. And I guess I'm hoping that we can see a little more partnership between SEMCRA and your group, and maybe we can get some more housing that is affordable for people, because we do have a big lack.
Tom, I really do like the way you guys plowed.